All right, thank everybody's attention. We'll get started. I'll turn it over to you and Mr. Trump.
I opened a public hearing regarding an application by the city to rezone some parcels of land that's located along Eastgate Drive, Ferry Lake Road, in Tipton, Tipton County, inner landfill. I want to inform any members of the public that the standards for the exercise of zoning powers, copies of those are in the court's office, they're also posted if you want to take a look at those, and are available as a handout. What's our consideration for this public hearing? It's considered the annexation and reclassification of about fifty-three point six one acres. It's Eastgate Drive, which is the Eastgate subdivision, a couple of parcels on Ferry Lake Road, and a Tipton, Tipton County, inner landfill. I'm going to ask Mr. Crowe just a minute to get up and tell us what this is about, but let me, just two questions, since this is a city application. I ask you to respond to the following questions. Do you or any members of your family own property that would be impacted by these classifications? Application whether it be a positive or negative impact. Do you or any members of your family have an interest in the business of the impact by this classification application, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
This, oh no, this property's not on the south side of it. All this is on the north side of it. I do have property that's out close to the bus. So it's all this on the north side of where I can sit.
All right, I ask Mr. Crowe, will you come up and tell us a little bit about the annexation and rezone of these parcels?
Thank you. Our office received an application, petition for an annexation of the land that is to describe our area. And it was brought in as a sixty percent method of annexation, and then, of course, adjacent rezone or applied rezone, it goes with that. Anytime you move a property from the county to the city, it has to be rezoned according to city standards. We received this application, we had ninety-five, ninety-seven point five percent of landowners, which was all but one within the whole area, were signed on, and ninety-seven point five percent of all the registered voters, which has to be tally, were owned except for one, and that was due, it was out of state, not ever signed petition. So, that being said, it is over ninety-seven percent, although it's with the sixty percent method. We did go to the Land Development Commission, and they unanimously approved the annexed property with the zoning as listed, and the staff recommendation is to approve this and accept it as part of the annexation of the city.
Will you just kindly describe what the re, what the zoning classification will be?
Sure. The zoning classification for the entire parcel, exception being inner landfill, will be R eight. They currently are A M and a little bit of W L I, but they'll all be R eight, which our R eight allows for both homes in, which is eight thousand square foot minimum lot size, the smallest lot characteristics we have, characteristics we have. Inner landfill will be H I, heavy industrial. Currently under our ordinance, it's required to be H I when you enter.
Mayor, if you don't mind, would you go ahead and address the issues that were addressed by Mr. Hatwater at some planning zoning meeting?
Here in the planning zoning meeting, and it came up from the school board, from Mr. Hatwater, that there was some issues that may arise in the future with having an H I as close to the school, to Jill Bailey, as that is, although there's other H I there, but to put a new H I that close. So, before we actually met the Land Development Commission, we sat down with Mr. Hatwater, and there was a solution, and that is that our current ordinance reads, our Land Development Code reads that a landfill, no matter whether it's inner or standard subtile B landfill, must be, since the city of Tipton must be heavy industrial. Okay? So what it would require, if you go to anything else than that, would be to establish a zoning characteristic for inner landfills alone. You'll be hearing in a few minutes about some information, discussion on that. Our suggestion, and there, back the other day, he did the same thing, is that we want to be able to change the Land Development Code to allow a separate category for inner landfills to be W L I or H I, because they do make the zoning characteristics of the W L I zone. That is, they, they're not the same as the heavy industrial. All right, so that being said, as soon as we can get that changed, which will be presented to y'all later today, then we would turn right around as soon as this is approved, and rezone inner landfill from H I, which is what we become with this change to W L I. And the thing is, we would go straight to W L I now, but our ordinance does not allow that. So we've got to change that first, and then turn around and change it. So there will be, as soon as this is all approved, we'll turn off, turn around and issue a city application for rezone on the inner landfill of the city of Tipton from H I to W L I.
When do you anticipate that happening?
If you vote on it and approve it on, what's the approval date? December the nineteenth? I will issue the petition on the twentieth. You'll see it for workshop in January, you won't, but everybody will see it in January, and we'll get that on Thursday. That's as quick as it can be, because that's good advertising and stuff like that.
And we're workshopping that test number tonight?
Right.
Are there any other, you mentioned there were other land shop property, are there any other properties we need to, from a zoning standpoint, while we're addressing this? Is there anything else we need to clean up, fix while we're at this, or is there anything else like that?
Not in that area, if not. I can't, only, there is another H I area there, but it's, it's an H I area that's been H I, and it's actually H I, it's truly, truly, truly H I, and it didn't change yet because of zoning characteristics, but for that area, that's pretty good, points up that, that area in there, so.
All right, I'll ask you now, if there's anyone who has any public input relative to the proposed ordinances. First, I'll ask if anybody wants to speak in favor of the proposed annexation and rezone. Has anyone here that would like to speak in opposition of the proposed annexation or rezoning classification?
Not, not, I haven't given the choice, there's another choice? I just want to make a comment.
Sure, come on up. I think you is somewhat in opposition.
It's not in opposition, it's one of those opportunities that...
Patrick, name and address, and you have five minutes.
Dave Patrick Hatworth Jr., twenty-seven four two Woodfield Road, county resident, but county superintendent.
Just for the record, we all know who you are.
No problem. I just, the opportunity, council members don't get to hear very often, I wanted to give kudos to your city staff, they were more than, more than willing to work with us on a solution to what could have been a difficult problem in the future. That's all the comment I needed to make for anyone. Thank you, stat, you're ahead.
Thank you, Patrick, appreciate you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to either speak in favor of or opposition to the proposed annexation and rezoning of the classifications, please? Mayor, I see on one I'd ask the public hearing.
Public hearing closed. At this time, we will take, with Ms. Kim Collin, who's here to discuss the signage calls as it relates to the enforcement of the code. Kim, if you will please state your name and give your address, if you don't mind.
Hi, Kim Brown, Lynn Colwell, one two Eastgate three. We received, along with other real estate companies in town, received, it says notice of violation, warning, first notice, don't really consider this a warning. We had a directional sign that I do not consider being in the right way. We're always told, like on Tipton Avenue, where the light poles are lined up, all that's in the right way, when the light pole to the road is part of the right way, but if you get on the inside of the right way into the property, that you're outside of the right way. We had two signs that were, we were considering outside of the right way, that were picked up by the city. I'm saying they're being held hostage, there's a thirty dollar fine that we are being told that we either have to pay within thirty days, or they're going to hack our signs and destroy them. I made a call into the city two weeks ago, and I've never had a return phone call since I left a message on the number that was on the sheet. We, as the Realtors, have got together, and we feel like that, A, it's not right, our directional signs that we picked up, they're not obstructing view, whether you're coming down the road, you're sitting at a road to turn right or left, and a directional is there, we don't, they're not obstructing the view, they're not in the way of traffic. We, as a real estate group of professionals, we offer a service to this community. We're offering a service to our sellers, who have properties to sell, who would like directionals to be up, so people know that there, there is property for sale, especially now in areas that are not as high traffic areas. We also have buyers that like to see our directionals up, so they know, when they're looking for property in certain areas, they know that there are houses for sale, and helps them target where they're looking to buy. The, there are other signs that are on the right ways that are not being picked up. There are for sale by owner signs, there are for sale by owner directionals, there are signs that say, we buy rental houses with an eight hundred number, which I have no idea who that belongs to. There are signs talking about we do buy society, all of those are all over the right ways, and none of those are being picked up. But we feel like, as local business owners, we are being targeted by the city. We don't feel like the city's been in business for anyone. We, we help the city with their tax revenue. As property values increase, as we sell property, as we help Tipton grow, and as the values of property around Tipton increase, so does the tax on us for the city of Tipton. And we are being penalized, and you're making it harder for us to perform our job and the service that we offer the community, when you are picking up our directional signs and telling us that it's going to be a thirty dollar fee to give them back. We feel like that we're a huge percentage of the taxpayers in this community, most of the Realtors have lots of rental properties as well, and we are a huge taxpayer for y'all, we're local businesses. We don't feel like there should be a charge. If we have a sign that is not in a place that you feel like is correct, we should get a phone call, and we will move it, but we don't feel like the sign should be taken and destroyed, or our fines should be charged.
Thank you, Kim, and let me just reference that, I had the opportunity to speak to the real estate, I guess that's blood, and I appreciate y'all letting me come out, what, two months ago? I can't remember what happened yesterday, but two months ago. And that's where this came up, when I came to the question and answer session, and I was actually concerned, it was thirty bucks, first time. There's no advance warrant, and no nothing, wouldn't take the signs, because it cost you thirty bucks to get it back. So I had asked several to come up here and give us a talk, so that's where this kind of came from. Of course, I guess this was, I want to hear from all four of us, but four others. Would you rather change the Land Development Code? Would that be required, or is this a code thing? Is this a...
It's in the Land Development Code. If you don't mind, I'll ask Mr. Crowe to put together a little presentation to kind of recap how we got to where we are today.
Okay.
And, so this is seven dot nineteen I, is where we address right away issues as far as sign and code.
Seven dot nineteen I?
That's correct.
In the Land Development Code?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Crowe's going to do it. A little history, we've been battling signs since two thousand and seven, when Grace Olive was here, we put together the first, I think it was seven, so, first signing committee, but so I don't mess this up, it's kind of strong, obviously, on how it's...
Of course, our office candidate existed since July of two thousand and eleven, and we were under the old ordinance, when I say old, the previous sign ordinance was the two thousand and six, that's sixteen, is the ordinance number. And on that, just to let you know what it said, and that's what we were, when we first came into Austin, until the Land Development Committee came in place, okay? And what was said on that one is that anybody that had a sign in the right way, we allowed no signs in the right way, period. And I'll follow up on that in a minute. We also were, we have a right to remove any sign in the right way, at any given time, without notice, and what we had to allow was three days for the sign to be picked up, and we were required to destroy it, in three days. Okay? We didn't think that was quite fair, I mean, personally, it was too restrictive. So when we began to look at the development of a new sign code as part of the sign, as part of the Land Development Code, and according to end two thousand and eleven, we set up a citizenry group, I do have a list of names, I'm not going right now, but I do have a table for you, if you want to see who was there. We met multiple times, came up with a new ordinance, and within as part of that, we believed that the use of that thing is restrictive for signs in the right way, that what would be a better solution would be to allow a reclamation of the signs, so they're going to be picked up within thirty days instead of three, and pay a thirty dollar reclamation fee. That is a deterrent, no doubt. This was agreed upon by the committee itself, Land Development, and you also counsel, staff was also a part of it, who actually came up with it. I did some checking, just to let you know what other cities are doing, just for your information. I checked, I believe, eight cities, several cities throughout the state. There's three main thoughts, patterns, one is what we're doing, it is the least restrictive of all of them, and that is that the person who has up to thirty days to figure their sign and pay thirty dollars, or whatever fee amount, most of them are in that thirty dollar range, that's come. Another one is that if a person has a violation of the right way, which this is what this is, it's a violation of the right way, then they just receive a citation, and that's the most common under the law. Those citations, then they're required to go for, and the fines can be anywhere between how the city sets them, from one hundred to one thousand dollars by state standard. Okay? Ours are in the two hundred plus range for a right away violation. The third thing that you see in some of the larger cities, is that what they do, is they literally charge what it costs to go, to retrieve, and dispose of the sign. So if you have a sign on the right way, and you have to go pick it up, they charge you for the time it takes the person that goes out there, the officer to pick it up and come back, they charge them for the prorate on that, they charge the prorate on fuel, they charge the prorate on everything, which turns out to be a pretty hefty fee to find, wherever you want to call it. Okay? We have a leash of security. Back in two thousand and eleven, November, October, two thousand and eleven, I actually have a copy of the letter that went out, and was hand delivered to each and every real tor, the city of Tipton, each office, and asked to distribute it with them. We did it hands on, so we could make contact with them, to notify them of the procedures that you can't put signs in the right way, any sort. We had gotten multiple complaints about signs of the turnouts on the corners, directional signs particularly. We addressed it accordingly, we've been following what the ordinance says. I think according to my regulation, and I checked, I think we've had, actually, three, that we've had to get to a point where they come and pick them back up, and they have to pay thirty dollars, and we've had, like, for example, right now, I know the comment was saying that we don't pick up all signs, I have forty signs out there right now, forty, that I'm waiting to, if the date comes to destroy them, or for somebody to come and fix them up. That's about, that's a little below average action, it usually runs anywhere between forty to fifty, at any given time, because when they rotate in, we tag them, the day we pick them up, we take a picture of them, we make sure they're in the right way, we document it, open a case, hold the case open, then go pick it up, and close the case. If they don't, we destroy the sign, and we close the case. We do notify every person with a letter that states they have a right to pick up the note, that's what the ordinance reads. So we're following procedure. And we all, we did that specifically, for thirty dollars to be more business friendly, to allow people an opportunity to get their signs back, because they're expensive signs out there.
They are expensive signs, if you've got that many of them, I just computed that, that's about twelve hundred dollars.
Yes, and I can't get them all up, but most of the time, they are, the smaller signs, the what y'all call the little state signs, they're not going to pick those up, they're not going to pay thirty dollars for them, I don't know what it costs now, but picking up a sign, I'm guessing maybe twenty dollars, I don't know what it costs a piece, but, you know.
Well, you're just doing your job. As I told the Realtors that I spoke to that day, yes, the city council approved the Land Development Code, let's test them, we're not senators, and we're not representatives, that book is that thick, we couldn't pick out every single thing that's in there. And I think thirty's too high, but that's my one personal opinion here. And, Larry, I don't know if you want to say something, I saw you move.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
I can read you.
Now, I was just going to say that the thirty dollar fee, when you consider administrative time, and that's all we can do, is to keep part of the administrative part of our time off, try to pick up the sign, do the paperwork, process, do all the administrative stuff, you probably got more than thirty dollars tied up in staff time and administrative costs. That's all I was going to say.
Well, what's the number written on that piece of paper? I mean, Kim has yet to receive a call back, so we, what number...
I don't know if mine issued any, I'm not saying that, but I would be glad to check my call register, I have a car register from months back, when we were setting the calls received, if you give me a date, you can find out why a lot of times, so.
The number's three nine one thirty-nine fifty.
That's our office number.
That I let them message on.
Really, during office hours, there's somebody there all the time, such and such, much time, which sounds...
Isn't that person lunging out right now, or...
Well, we do have a temp in, so they answer the questions and take messages, I give ten, fifteen, twenty a day, so that's part of it. If it had been addressed to me, I would call her back, and address it to someone else, and I have a list of all calls, both electronically and on paper, so I can check and see when she called, and if she called, and if she not yet, I know she did, she says she did, but what time she called, and find out why she's not coming back.
I want to, I want to see that, because we need to make sure we all get the calls since we've been, whatever they call it, that's really important. And I'm going to look at this, you know, it might be a deal, and I understand about the cost, you know, that maybe, if it's a violator that hasn't had any problems in the past, they get a warrant for it, you know, and then money starts if it becomes habitual, you know, something like that, but just off the cuff, you know, that's kind of, especially if it's a small business owner, just moved to town, they don't maybe know the rules, you know, because people don't get the big bug when they move to town, and don't know, and all of a sudden this happens to them, and they're like, oh my gosh, I'm just trying to have a little business here, and grow my little area. So, you know, when you look at that, so, let's do that, I was putting on, now on the workshop, give me time to look at the code.
I would like to address some of the best, if you don't mind, we do do inspections for every business that opens here, so part of our inspection process is letting them know about the performance of signs, right of ways, setbacks, whatever may need, you know, number of contact information, contact, have time to reach them back, call them back, that's for every business that opens, and I'm saying that I'm right, so, you know, application to put in, the requirement to inspect that business, so that's our opportunity to make contact with those citizens that are living in the community. Just let you know also that, you know, there is another option involved, and the reason we didn't take that option is because it is more costly, and that is to cite people for violation, because it is a violation of the right way, and that's a serious violation, it's when I worked with road department for years, it's a serious violation, and hasn't been violated in golf instruction. So we chose not to go that route with anybody, and we have it on the sign issue, and don't want that.
Mr. Attorney, Joe Pope has raised his hand, can he approach the podium and speak, or, he would have to have the two, the two, Kim got the five minutes, would that be warranted, the two minutes?
My understanding was, we have not voted on yet whether you want to hear public comment at workshops, but since we're still in a state of flux, I mean, if we have...
We have to vote on it to see, I mean, what, is it an unofficial vote?
I think the council wants to hear from Mr. Pope, I think that'd be appropriate to see if anybody was in consensus, to hear from him.
I'd like to, Mayor, would you? Sure, Joe's up. Mr. Pope, if you'll give us your, your name and your address, sir.
Thank you, my name is Joe Pope, twenty-six, twenty-six Holland Avenue, one of the owners is City Twenty-One, Scott Franch, Pope, and been running the State Code for years, and proud to say that Tim's been very good to me, and he's been my customer. But what I'd like to say is that, you know, we're just trying to make a living, and I think all the realtors in Tipton County love Tipton, Georgia, and, you know, we're not bad people, all we want, if you can take a phone call and say, look, get your sign up and move it back, we'll move it within minutes, okay? But, you know, let's stay friendly within this, let's don't tell them, hey, well, you want this citation, this, we, you know, listen, we're not even bad, we're friendly here, okay? If it takes a call, that's the less administrative thing, you ain't got to drive there, you pick up the phone. I guarantee you, if we violate anything, we'll have our sign out there within minutes, okay? But we don't have citations, they don't take place ten to yards, they couldn't get your sign up, you know, a simple phone call, if we make that mistake, and everybody makes mistakes, but friendly about this, this will be citation, citation, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. This would, this would, and I'm going to ask the legal question here, this would create some type of vote to change anything, I guess, in the future, not tonight, but...
It would change and blame milk, kind of, texting them.
Right, but as I always do, I always ask, if that was a bunch of railroaders out there, and I'm in the railroad business, I'd wonder if I should say, I'm just talking about Julie, and I don't mind if Julie stays, but I don't want it to be some kind of legal problem, because she's a Realtor, there, that's her family out there, and so if we start to take this as a vote, tell me what we do with that situation. I, I think she should be able to stay, myself, but I don't want something to go down on the record that something was done wrong.
Well, Mayor, in fact, if we get to that point, we can address that, I don't think it's a conflict, but I would like to...
I don't think it is.
Think about it, I don't see any financial, you know, interest that we're...
None.
So, it's something I can look at.
Yeah, I...
This is not just a real estate sign issue, Mayor, this is a right of way, signs in the right way regardless of what kind of sign it is, it's not just a real estate sign.
I know most of us know, but can you get clarification as to why it's a violation?
It's a safe issue.
Right. Not just on the local level either, but on the state.
Safe issue.
Yeah, the obstruction of right way, line of sight.
Oh, we're talking about a little short.
And that's a...
We're talking about a little short.
We're talking about all, we're talking about all signs. Don't get stuck on real estate signs, because we do have signs out there, it's pretty big topic. If you have a sports car, and it's on the corner of a business, you can't sit around there. I can give you a prime example, which you got there at the intersection of Armour Road and Second Street, that little grocery store out there, sometimes they get those little signs out there, and they skew them out there, you can hit a block of the street on those to sit around the corner.
I understand that, but the little short political signs, I'm talking about.
It's not broken down to just political signs or real estate signs, you've got to look at unintended consequences when you start talking about signs on the right way.
But maybe it should be, but maybe it should be, because that's what these people are here for.
Well, if, like you said, excuse me, cut, let's go back, violating is being habitual, then, then get, then get the, you can give a citation to them. I think, I go along with you, I think you should call them, whether it's a real estate company, or whether it's a, a we bought your car sign, if we, if we, if we find out who wants the sign, it, it seems like appropriate to call the business and tell them about the sign, and ask them to come move it. Now, if it's been three times in the same business, then I, maybe you should, give them a citation, or a, a fine, but if it's, if it's just, then I don't know how long the sign will be, the date, you know, if you say thirty days, or whatever, whatever special you got running, like the guy at the grocery store, he got, over there now, he got three coats for ten dollars, you know what I'm saying? But if it's, if it, next week he gonna change the sign, so I ain't saying it's going to take me to sign during the trash, get it up, because I, I think we should, give them a call, whoever it is, call, move the sign, let it move, and if it's a person that violated three times, well, they just give, give a citation.
We would have to change the Land Development Code to do that.
Mayor, it's a pleasure, Council, can y'all take a look at that seven dot nineteen I?
Yeah, seven dot nineteen I.
Seven dot nineteen I addresses right away, signs in the right way, that's what...
You got that.
I've got it right here.
Well, I ask you is, y'all will take a look at it, and then email your recommendations on what how you want it changed, if that's what you want, to us, and then we can, we can put it together.
It's only a paragraph or two, I don't think you hear it right now, could it?
It's four lines.
Can we hear it now? Okay, Ms. Mary Anne, if you'll...
In the event a sign is determined to be in the right of way in violation of this ordinance, the sign may be removed by the Director of Environmental Management, what is designated, and impounded without notice. All signs impounded may be reclaimed within thirty days upon payment of a thirty dollar encumement fee per sign. Any sign not reclaimed within thirty days shall become the property of the city and may be disposed of in any manner deemed appropriate by the Director.
Just so, and, under the prohibited signs, prohibited sign is a sign in the right way, which is really ironic, I think that was...
Okay.
And in defense of our guests here tonight, and what women's brought up, we don't have a standard right of way per se. Typically speaking, you're going to have a sixty or eighty foot right of way, or a six street, in some cases a hundred, but when you look at all the right of ways around town, and in all the different neighborhoods, that right of way might be right behind the power pole, right behind the curb, right behind the sidewalk, sidewalk, or it might be fifty feet up in someone's yard. It just all depends on where you are in the city, and without, well, we do have a right way map, that's out of the conflict, but typically speaking, if the sign is behind the power pole, it's not going to be in the right way, typically.
So what are we going to do, y'all, I need some feedback.
If you don't mind, Mayor, one thing I would like...
If you don't mind, Mayor, one thing I would like to add too, and I'm, I'm telling about you asking a question, I think it's a very legitimate question.
You've got to come up here for Mike, I mean, for reporters to keep up on.
You don't have to give your name and address, let's.
Bert Crowe, he asked me about the signs that I did have in possession now. Of those signs, I have two real estate signs, the rest are others. And over the last probably year, I maybe had six real estate signs, of hundreds of signs. So what you're affected in, I want you to be aware, what you're affected in is an issue within the right of ways. It is an issue of a little sign on the corner that says, you know, get your firewood, or a sign on the corner that says, you know, come here for this or that or the other, whatever they may be, including, I mean, you play the political signs, you know, we follow that same character. So just to let you know, it's a very, 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 very small proceeding. In fact, as a group, to be honest with you, the real estate businesses have probably done the best at policing themselves with signs. And they have. Occasionally, there's one that slips through, but it's very rare, very rare. I have two real estate companies, from real estate companies, right now.
I would like to say this about the telephone, calling people, it would be easy to call one of you real estate people because you've got offices, you've got secretaries. But a lot of the sign, most of the signs that you have aren't like, it could be a political sign, that's no telephone number on that. It could be a sign I do soon, there's no telephone number on that. We had a whole lot of administering work, our staff, to request them to call three times. So I just caution you to think about that carefully. I don't know that calling is the answer.
And we did, by the way, allow, lack of federal or grace period, for information from the grace period, picking up in the grace period where we do give, get to calling, when we could, reach somebody, let them know. But with the drop in staff, which you know about very well, and the number of signs, and that was a hard point from the very beginning with us, it was a point that made us that wanted to sign between the city and Tiff. It's quite enough, as you can see, it can get to the end numbers quick. And we pulled a bunch of signs. And, and, you know, the number retrieved, as I said, I think I've had three picked up that I remember. Of course, I came and paid thirty dollars, they either signed them. And I've had some expensive signs that weren't picked up, and I've had some ten dollar signs that weren't picked up, you know. So, you know, it technically works for all practical purposes. And really, is what we feel like, still feel like, is a very good option, really ain't a problem. I mean, I have very little problem with the real estate agency as well.
Let me ask you this, when you talk to the people in other cities, has there been, has there been something set aside for our realtor friends? Because what Kim pointed out, these are businesses in our community, they bring money to our town, they do increase. Has there been any?
None at all. The city, of all, of all businesses, they pick up signs immediately, and that's it, they set a citation. I don't care what business it is, that's what I was told today. I talked to, I think we filed Austin, I've talked to so many, they basically do the same thing. City of Atlanta, they actually charge, according to their time energy and effort, they actually get a real dollar value that they apply to picking up the sign, and they actually, not really cite that person, they charge that person a fee. It's on their records, it's on the city. They, different cities, different ones, Park of Athens, County Park, they do basically what we do, same principle. I mean, it ranges, that's your bulk of range, but I did not have a single person, number one, that allowed any signs in the right of way, none, nowhere. Number two, I didn't have anybody that didn't pick up the signs in the right of way if they weren't there. And I found none that made any exemptions for signs, signs for signs. But they make it in some smaller cities, I didn't go down as far, any small, in the ones I could find, the ones I could find there. But, you know, it's, that's the research that I found as well.
Can I put this thing to committee?
There, can't.
Would you be uncomfortable being on the committee, if you're, you know?
Probably, but I would like to say something, if it's okay.
Sure.
And it's, you know, have a good both hands, it's kind of an interesting decision to make. And, and as real estate companies, we do rely heavily on signs. But I want to go back to a hand-delivered letter. And we talk about being friendly, we talk about, you know, the extra level of service. I remember the day that Bert walked into my office with a letter, and it hung on our bulletin board forever. And I think I finally got right away, unfortunately, but it was like, okay, that's all we used to have, it's gone on. We've worked so hard to get this city cleaned up, we really have. And you've all been to communities where you drive up to the, you pull off the interstate, or you drive up to the corner, and there's a zillion signs. And I'm afraid if we begin to be selective, and I'm talking about the industry that I work in, if we begin to be selective as a council and say, okay, real estate companies, you can, you can put your signs there, but nobody else can, we're gonna have folks lined up, the guys who have firewood for sale are gonna come in and say, we also contribute to the community. The people who rent the ugly houses, we also contribute to the community. I'm afraid we're gonna open up that door for clutter, for the very thing we've worked so hard to clean up. I know that the code enforcement department has extreme challenges with the number of people they have. They do a lot with a little. And, you know, it's kind of like when you're driving down the highway and everybody's speeding, everybody's speeding. And all of a sudden, it looks like it's behind you, you know, and the first, the first offense is, well, gosh, officer, everybody was speeding. Well, I pick you. And if I get back in my car and I can catch up to them, I'll stop them too. So unfortunately, sometimes things do slip by, you know, people are allowed to fall through the cracks, if you will, from an enforcement standpoint. But that's only because we don't have the money to hire enough people to stack that department. We went through that with a budget issue. He asked for more people, we said no. If we have more people, then we could do a better job probably of picking up more signs. But, you know, I think like Larry said, that the general consensus is, you know, the, most of the time, if you stay behind, and I do think our real estate companies do a good job of policing ourselves. You know, we know to stay behind the power poles, stay behind the street signs, that kind of thing. We are all, we have independent contractors, the people that work in our office are not my employees, they're independent, individual business people. So I think as companies, we do try to do the right thing, we do try to share those rules. It's up to that individual agent to police themselves on this particular issue. But I don't want to see us get into a situation where we're opening up the door to clutter our city, to create issues, because like you said, one of the reasons we have this, as strict as it is, or as non-strict as it is, is in response to the multitudes who said, please clean this up and fix this for us. And we were given the letter, that was the first warning, that was the friendly warning. Bert came around individually, office to office, and said, these are the rules, this is what we need to do. So that's, that's just my thought. I would be uncomfortable sitting on a committee, though. I don't think anything needs to be changed, I have no problem vocalizing that right here, right now. So I don't know that I would be as neutral as I would need to be for someone to serve on a committee.
I appreciate that, and I'm gonna appoint a committee. I'm gonna ask Johnny, Chris. And I'd like, are there any volunteers out there to be on a committee to discuss this, see where we can go with it? Joe Pope, anybody else in the realty family? All right. Okay, we got Kim Caldwell, and Joe Pope, Chris Parrott, and Johnny Terrell, Vice Mayor. And that's where we'll go with it, see what happens. Everybody okay with it? That's fine.
You might decide who's gonna call the meeting.
You want me to run this for you, Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm not sure I didn't, the citizens are gonna run their own committee a lot.
Oh, no, but they'll be a part of this, of the two here.
So the committee will be looking at allowing signs to be on the right of way, is that what they're looking at?
I think they should just look at everything, they need to look at the land development code, how it's structured, they need to look at how it affects the realtors, how it affects others, and come back with some, with some ideas on where we can go. How we can work with our real estate community to find after this thing. Apparently, we wouldn't have this many realtors in here if it wasn't, if they didn't think there was a problem. So just, just an idea to get people together, get people to talk. Government.
I still don't quite clear on what the role of the committee is. Bert, is it just me, am I, am I having a moment?
Do y'all understand what the role of committee is, Joe?
Very much so.
So the role is to look at whether signs will be allowed on the right of way?
And a number of things, yeah, yeah, dealing with signs. And that's what we'll do, and you'll be there at every meeting to be sure that it's.
We don't, we don't have staff this time.
Yeah.
We're supposed to have, you know, all of this stuff.
Okay. That sounds good. Now let me recognize Wes Saylor, Wes is in the House. He's our newly-elected councilperson, he'll be taking over when Ms. Mary Anna leaves us, and we're looking for big things out of him. And Wes, the only thing you missed was at the very beginning, we did the zoning map a minute, we had a public hearing, and then we'll vote on that a little later. And then you came in, we're talking about the signs, so you're up for this now. Appreciate you being here. We all thank you, you don't have to stay in this board meeting, but you're welcome to. We're gonna move now to item number one for the city management update. You know.
Bert. Just a couple of things, real quick tonight. First thing I want to do is thank all of the volunteers that turned out for the hands-on Tiffon cleanup that was last Saturday. There were over three hundred people turned out, I think there's two hundred and eighty-seven actually signed the sheet and said, we're here as volunteers, we're here to work. So thank you all, thank citizens of Tiffon, and appreciate that. And we're gonna see if we can structure this thing in such a manner that we can do this annually. More than that, I think would be a stretch, but we're gonna go that way with it. So thank all of the coordinators, I'm not gonna try to name them because I get in trouble, I'm sure I'll forget someone. That, and then one other tidbit of information, I've been asked to sit on panel for the National Solid Waste Organization in Atlanta in April. With your permission, I will attend that, as I did the one in Savannah. Very interested in why cities are starting looking at privatizing their collection disposal of their solid waste and recycling and all that. And unless there's some objections, I'll be in Atlanta in April sometime. None of this, but, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Item number two is the, oh, Lucretia, that's the resolution providing for free application for funding from the Land and Water Conservation Fund program for downtown parks.
Can I have a hand?
Good signal.
We are applying for a application to do some upgrades and rehabs to our three downtown parks, the other downtown development garden. Those parks include the Main Street Gateway, Veterans Memorial Park, and the Tiffon Garden. I actually have a budget that shows some items that we're going to be repairing.
Did you add the water now?
We did, we did. The city of Tiffon will need to be an applicant, that they are the eligible applicant. The Downtown Development Authority has approved to provide a fifty-one percent match. Ronan, when you and I were communicating about being able to initiate that fifty percent, they've changed it to fifty-one percent. The total project cost is a hundred and forty thousand dollars. The DDA's contribution by match is seventy-one thousand four hundred, and the grant will actually give us sixty-eight thousand six hundred dollars to do those repairs. I do need a resolution that Ronan has, and I guess she'll actually pass it on to our mayor. And I also have a free application form that needs to be signed by the mayor, but I'll pass on to Ronan as well. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Can you specify just for public knowledge, on the DDA match, that's not coming from the city general fund? Can you kind of explain how that works?
The Downtown Development Authority started in their meeting this week, which was Tuesday, approved to use gloss words to provide a match, monetary match for this particular land. As I said, it includes three improvements throughout three downtown parks, Main Street Gateway, Veterans Memorial Park, and Tiffon Garden.
I told you that'd be the first question, that's why I asked it. Because here, there's no city funds.
Sorry, that is educated, and you have to.
Yes, my apologies.
I also have copies for you who are not at the meeting, because the information update is on time all days. So you can have your real estate schedule.
I got one.
Oh, okay, okay, great, great.
Thank you. Lucretia, I'd just like to thank you for finding this source of money, especially with the recent events we had downtown, the Veterans Day celebration on the Saturday and the Monday. It was so nice to be able to sit in that park on both of those days and honor those people, and it's just such a beautiful setting. And it's exciting with what's going on, and a well-maintained, clean, you know, well-structured downtown is important for everybody. So thank you for.
Yes, morning.
I have a lot more, I have to reach more.
Yeah, just what do you?
Are there any other questions?
I've got one, I have one.
You have one?
I've got one too.
Chris, you? Oh, here, I'm sorry, here we go.
Okay.
That gets everybody one.
I'll use a nice reset for ten.
I'll use this.
Now that's, that's gonna be in the news trip, correct?
Why, this, actually, we have a full page there, that's coming out on time all days. We have copies that will be in Tiffon, Oak Tree, as well as Thomasville, so we will actually have that there. That includes on the board.
Thank you, Lucretia, appreciate that. Item three is the, Larry is the relevant authorizing mayor to sign a notice of intent, and contract for maintenance of highways numbered, I'll let you go.
We've been working on a project for several years now for the Old Omega Road interchange for three nineteen, to move, to help move some of the truck traffic off of the eighty-two I seventy-five interchange. This project will allow for the upgrade and improvements of Old Omega Road from I seventy-five northbound ramp to three nineteen. And it's gonna actually turn Old Omega Road to a ninety-degree angle to intersect three nineteen. Right there by the, I think it's Howard Johnson's now, RV Parks and all that out there, Lake Seahime, okay? And what this contract agreement is, is the city and county will both maintain their areas of that grade during the construction process. And that's what this is for. It's a good project, we'll get some traffic, they're gonna signalize the intersection in three nineteen.
Great.
And it'll be a great improvement for the transportation system around those two interchains, that's what that's for.
Thanks, Mayor. Bert, you still with us, ordered providing for annexation of East Gate subdivision and surrounding areas.
Mayor, as discussed in the public hearing, we received an application for annexation of approximately fifty-three point seven acres around the area of East Gate subdivision, it was issued west. And as we said before, we're going through the process of that ninety-seven point five percent participation by petition. It's family, and we don't have a plan, it's only, and everything is available now. And staff recommendation is that we should approve the annexation of East Gate subdivision and surrounding areas and the adjacent, and follow up and rezone to allow that park to be in the city. It's about forty.
Is that the math over there on the wall?
Yes, sir, there should be one here, say.
Yeah, I'm looking at one in here, but I don't know that I'm.
You're near Geo Valley School.
Yes.
See, Larry got those maps, man.
Just be careful.
Appreciate that.
Does it, the math that I have in here, does it go any further back than? Larry, oh, this is on the, this is on the, this is on the south side of USA, did you?
No, sir.
It's not?
No, sir.
I see all this stuff.
Look at this, this is the point north.
Oh, I'm looking at all this red stuff, see, that is, that is.
That's the East Gate, that's the city limits, that's all out of the city limits.
I just say the city limits.
Annexation, there's this, back down in this portion, it's right in. And it's actually, there's this, right down in this corner, it's right in front.
Oh, okay. So that's on this page, back over here.
Yes, sir. Eight-two is the way down.
Yeah, there's, so, and this includes the inner landfill?
Yes, sir. This is the corner, that's 82 here, there's actually a road lots before you get 82.
That's right.
Those all here, yeah?
Yeah.
Those are north of that.
Okay, okay.
So this whole section, and then this section here.
Where is this, this is Fletcher Road?
Yes, sir. This is Fletcher Road, and how connection is, Fletcher Road is entrance and, or exit and turning, look down here.
Okay.
And then this is actually entrance to the subdivision here. And this is actually the church that's there, it's a manual...
That's right. Schools over here, that's why the school was there, right there.
That's right, there's, there's, they're here. One lot on this corner, going to the city, and then there's a parking lot right here. The parking lot was already in the city, and we need to bring the whole lot into the city.
Okay, thank you, Bert. You have the next one, too, item number five.
Yes, I said, are there any questions?
Yes, sir. Oh, yes, sister? I got it. Is Johnny okay?
He has, I'm calling Mr. Grant.
Oh, okay. I hate he's going to miss this. Yeah, I guess we'll head and move on to number five.
Number five, actually, is the rezone or zoning for that subdivision, which will go into RA, the big section in our angle, which will go to HI, which is internally returning and rezoned to WLI. So that's that, that's that, in conjunction with it.
Okay.
Any questions?
Seeing done, we'll move on to item number six.
Item number six is requests to change in land development code on three different areas. You see, you take the summary. First area is allow for purchase area in lots in City Tifton. Right now, currently, the purchase lots are 50%. We're making a recommendation that those be changed from 50% to what is required by the landscape ordinance. The landscape ordinance says there has to be at least 10% green space.
A buffer.
Buffer, all included, but there must be at least 10%. Some do require a buffer area anyway. You know, if you're bordered to a residential, you have to have a buffer.
Right, anyway.
But, but that allows for not 100%, but for at least up to, you know, approximately 90% painting in an area. That part would also, if they were paved, would also have to follow the restrictions for runoff, you know, that would have to be followed, too, by state standards.
That one takes care of the John Lud.
It does, yes.
And I had Griffin, Danny Griffin, to call me, too. And I asked him to call.
Yes, and they take care of his problem, too. I've been trying to get touch with his engineer. I told his engineer this is probably coming down the pipe, but I haven't been able to get touch with him.
Great, thanks, Bert.
All right. And also in that, too, there's also a portion there, too, to do the residential lots. Most of those now are going from 20% to 40%, to move into 50%. And the reason for that is that now with the economy changing, and I think on real estate people, real estate people can understand what I'm saying, we're getting a lot of people that are adding on to houses. And we're seeing a lot of houses, that we already have a lot of houses that are 50% of the lots area, in the, in residential area. We want to allow residents to have the opportunity to use their lots of their discretion, that 50% covered. And that's not uncommon to see throughout. That is a minor change there, it's about 10% change there.
Still want to affect the side yard setback and stuff like that.
No, sir, we don't want to affect that at all. That won't change at all. It will change the ability to use the, what we call, we like to call it the buildable area.
Yeah.
That would be to use more of that buildable area.
Okay.
Are there any questions on that? I've been wanting to ask you on mine, there are three items on there.
That goes to 50%.
Yes, ma'am. Across the board. And that's a slight change, but it's just, it's correct, it's something we see coming into future.
That's good.
And we see it coming into future.
I like that, yeah.
Any other questions on that one? The second one is setback requirements on the street side of a corner commercial lot. I know that says a lot when I say it, but, but in the city of Tifton, if you have a corner lot in a commercial area, the side setback is half, excuse me, 75% of the front setback, okay? Give you prime example. In a typical GB zone, the front setback's 35 feet. Okay? Anywhere else along the street is 35 and probably zero on the sides. But if you have a corner lot, where there's a road on the side, then that becomes 26.5 feet, because it's, it's 75% of what the front setback is. Okay? So and the reason for that is that so you don't impede your corners. And two, on a portion of business, too, in a joint business, you could have an interest coming inside. So well, half the lot time, you see businesses that are facing, they sack a street, and then all of a sudden, they start subdividing that building, and now they got interests facing whatever street, the parallel street, you know, Magnolia, whatever they be. And the, the thing to that is that you want to leave enough space where you actually don't, you know, you've got place for parking, you're not impeding the traffic, and those are areas, edges. We want to extend that area to allow more use of that space. In other words, instead of 75%, which would be 26.5 feet, we want to go to 50% of the front setback requirement on the corners. Which gives them more footprint. It's a good thing.
That's a good thing.
It's a business, isn't it?
That's good.
Gives them more use of their own property.
Yeah.
And, and it's very doable, at least plenty of room for turnaround. We checked the measurements, at least. It doesn't impede 20-foot corners, it doesn't impede, you know, coming around. It still leaves room enough also for parking. It, it gives them about an extra nine feet, is what it does on a standard lot or a setback. And that's, that could be substantial, if you, if you're talking about the real estate department.
Yes, sir, very substantial.
And we hope that this also helps us, too, where we have a lot of streets that corner, and a lot of areas that, and I'm not going to name areas, but it's where we want to, you know, to have developments. And some of those areas are cornered quite a bit, the secondary streets. And we want to then maybe develop some of those areas and, you know, bring about them in that sense. It actually will allow more of a footprint to be used by business without becoming an issue of being setback here and there.
That's touche, because, you know, a corner lot in the, in the commercial section, the, the tax assessors rate that as a more expensive lot than others, so we get more tax. And, and with changing this, I think we can utilize that corner lot, make it even more valuable.
Absolutely.
Good, man.
This gives us some more, some more lead for development, okay?
It really does.
The last, or this is the end of questions, I'm sorry. Any other questions left? The last point is the classification of the inner landfill. We talked about that somewhat already. Right now, currently, as I said before, the landfills are glumped in one lump sum in the land development code as landfills, period, and they're required to be HI. We believe that needs to be separated to do a distinct difference between an inner landfill and a somehow de-landfill. If you don't believe it, go down to the main landfill and you'll see the difference. And, you know, those inner landfills do meet the criteria for WLI, which is wholesale lives industrial, very, very well. Plus, this helps to solve a problem that we have with the annexation, but in the future, too, it will allow for other uses of the inner landfill, or for the suspension, or what it may be. And we believe it's a very, 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 very much within guidelines, but we do, it does require a change in land development code to allow that as a category, second category.
We applaud you. Does your, does your division have like think tanks? Y'all, y'all just see some of this, kind of throw right in the face of it, and you say, "Hey, we do need to tweak it," or something like that?
We think a lot, yes, sir. We do.
Y'all have like decisions where you have a think tank thing, say, "Here's some of the problems."
We do, yes, sir. And we get inquiries from citizens that seem to make, you know, rational sense, for lack of a better word, make good sense, and we try to see how those can be implemented and not affect everybody else. It is a cause and effect. Everything fills stone and water, rippled berries. So, you know, we have to make sure and look at every aspect of every request or whatever can come in through our department. And we do get a lot that you never hear about, so we do get a lot, always come in, and what we do is they make good sense, and they're not, you know, as dead-located as being developed or whatever it may be, and it's good, it gives them hope, and we try to do what we can in the end, so.
Bert, thank you so very much. Item number seven is report on bid providing for purchase of police units, Mr. Chief.
Bert, I want to say, I don't want to follow Bert anymore.
Yes.
I want to say, the man just went up.
The red dude.
This year, 2004, we issued a C and B, $116,000 for the purchase police vehicle. I let them not include the equipment. We sent out seven bids, five were returns, and the time we sent the bids out, we're not able to figure what type of vehicle we wanted to get. I have to do some research, we're going to put it in the vet. Vehicle available to us right now would be $2,016,000, charge it. And we recommend that we buy these vehicles and driven Dodge Chrysler, they're definitely loaded, for a price of $93,368. I also would like to recommend that we explore possibilities of providing extended warranty. We really would like to look at that, if these cars have been out for two years, take birth of the Chrysler or Dodge, charge it. And we don't know what kind of fault to anticipate. It comes with a three-year, 36,000-mile powertrain warranty, five to 100,000-mile extended warranty also, but I would like to get to the next step in that, would be the five-year, 75,000-mile warranty, covered by like 4,000 different parts.
This, this packet page, the 96, Lacretia, that was already with that, that warranty in, right?
No, with, with the warranty, $103,368. Now, that's not easy stuff, I'm still doing research on the warranty. Maybe something we don't need, I'm still looking.
Oh, okay, that's on the next page, okay. I was looking on the bid page.
Those police interceptors hitting up the outdated Crown Vittories? Or what model car is that, on Ford's?
Oh, it's actually on a Ford's frame.
So it's a Tarsus?
Well, it's a QWZ, that day, if I can get my hand on the Crown Vittage, I'd buy that. I'd buy all my five.
Yeah. Okay, buddy, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Well, one question. We need to think you'll get your research done on the extended warranty. By the December meeting?
Oh, just now.
Okay.
I mean, I've, just a few days, I've already had, covered city four weeks, and they're being on it.
And the next item eight is disposition of the surplus bicycles.
Yes, we currently have 95 bicycles that have been stored at the complex warehouse. And 79 of these bicycles are ready to be disposed of, sold, destroyed, used by the department, or whatever. We're processing getting a court order signed by Spirit Force Jillette, there are certain laws we have to go through to, to recover property or any evidence. We've also identified 14 bicycles that we prefer to give away to need families. The remainder, 65, so it's a discretion. It's all intended upon justice, and we can give bicycles away. And another thing, in our case, this morning, is I think the YMCA is doing the same thing, we may work in conjunction with them, but we're in process.
So you're just going to give away 14 of them?
Yes, ma'am. We, we can afford to put a bunch of money in, if we get some of the verified bicycles, we got to place quit, pedals, channels, a few of them, but they, it just, it's just a community.
Good. No other questions? Thank you, chief, appreciate you. Ms. Rowan, discussion of rules and procedures with councilman.
Yes, sir, I just put this back on the agenda, the request of Councilman Parrott. We asked that if he's able to, this meeting, if he's prepared to talk about it, great, if he wants to pay with the money.
And I'm okay with the way it is, Ron.
Well, there are two. Which one are you up to?
Well, the one that won't prepare.
Well, she has two, isn't there?
I gave you two options. One that just says that, you know, we take public input just at council meetings, and the rest is your discretion, and the other one says, at council meetings, workshops, and the balance of meetings is at your discretion. So there were two options available there.
Yeah, and I made some notes, and I'm all on weather tonight.
Let me look, let me look real quick for you.
One of the things that came up this evening, for instance, is when somebody wanted to speak, if they're not on the agenda.
Exactly.
You know, that might be something that's going to come up, and when you think about what you want to do, you want to make sure that anybody that wants to speak, that they're not on the agenda, can't speak, or, because then if you're going to be right back to where you were tonight, is, you know, kind of, will we let them speak, not let them speak? You might want to decide, you might want to say, if you want to speak, you have to be on the agenda, then you have a little bit of a format, and you know who's going to speak. But if you want to do something different, that's fine, I just think you need to have a, some type of procedure about who you're going to let to speak, if they have to be on the agenda, and, and when they can. What I see happening sometimes is that, you know, during the workshop, you might be talking about an issue, and then somebody might be out in the audience, who might want to speak on that issue, then signed up on the agenda, so I don't know how you want to deal with that scenario.
Rowan, can we do, can I email you, maybe copy the council on, on the list I made? Let's do that.
Sample number two is the one that says, at regular meetings and workshops, and then the balance at discretion.
That's the second one, for sure.
Yes, sir. We can provide, you know, the regular signup sheet for both of those meetings, if you all wish.
Which is, I mean, I want the input, you know, at both of them, so.
Right.
But give me, give me a chance to do that.
Okay.
And I'll send it to you.
So do you all want me to? I'll wait until I get that from you.
Okay.
Okay. All right.